Hey Huber, it's Cindy Schwartz. I'm back at my third episode, I guess you would call it. Um, this was just the council meeting following up the work session that I had talked about last week. And, um, it was again packed full of a whole bunch of stuff. Um, you know, some things are interesting, some things kind of not. Um, but you know, it these things still have to, you know, take place at an open meeting and, um, you know, to where the public can see what's going on. Like I said, some things just are kind of like mundane, but hey, they have to happen in the public eye. Uh, so we appointed, um, and reappointed too many, um, uh, boards of commission, uh, boards and commission people. Um, so congratulations to all of them. Um, sorry, I always get nervous when I'm by myself. Uh, I know that, um, John Russell's city manager report didn't have a whole bunch in it because it was just chopped full of good information last week, but again about the, uh, leave pickup. It, um, it's going to run through early December and, uh, updated routes are going to be on the Facebook page, they said. And or you can call, um, this number and, you know, find out where they're at, where they're going to be that day. And it's nine three seven two three seven three six zero three. So there's that, um, like I said, there was a whole bunch of boards and commission of people that were appointed and reappointed and then it got into the business, I would say. And, uh, first up, sorry, I'm having to read from my notes because I watched this meeting on Monday. I took, uh, the rest of my notes on Tuesday. And then last night I went to a board of zoning appeals, um, meeting to where, um, I spoke and all that didn't go that well. Um, so I'll talk about that later. I'm gonna just stay on track with, uh, talking about the city council meeting and everything because, uh, yeah, I don't want to, you know, go off into left field about something else. So again, this is just to, uh, try to keep you guys informed and up to date with not having to watch, you know, the super long city council meetings. Um, I might say things here and there that are my assumptions or my thoughts. And 100% just like on the last video, I can be wrong. Um, I have no problem with, you know, somebody telling me like, hey, what you said? Not correct or it's, it's not accurate. That's not my intention to ever put out information that is not accurate. So just, just saying that, just say that. So if you hear anything that doesn't sound right, um, or it's under my interpretation or what I'm assuming, definitely, you know, say something in the comments, uh, let me know because I don't want to misinform anyone. So I'm trying to get more people involved and engaged with our city government. So the first thing was the basic development plan for the Dublin seven. It is 700 square or 700, yeah, it's a really small restaurant. 7,000 square foot with seasonal beer garden, 450 max capacity. There is going to be 80 parking spaces. Um, yes. 80 parking spaces. Um, and they have said that the code requires 160 based on the two to one ratio for every two patrons. You get one parking spot and you get one parking spot for every two employees. But still we chose to only have 80 parking spots. Um, and they talked about the fact of how people could park at the Rose, um, the future indoor music venue. Um, you know, and I guess like other spots that are going to be around and they're supposed to have a shuttle service that's going to, uh, take people around and everything. Which that sounds great, but we need a place for people to park to then go around on the shuttle. And so when the Rose is sold out, we have people parking at Warped Wing and the True Hotel, just in the grass, anywhere they can park. So if we have this indoor music vendor venue as well that I will get into, they have less parking spaces than I really think is needed. If we're building all three of these like this and this isn't, it's a, once you get there, it could be a walkable entertainment district, but you have to be able to get there. Um, so, and you have to be able to park your car. So I'm, I'm not sure how all of this is really going to go. It, it doesn't make a whole hell of a lot of sense to me. Um, but it is what it is. Um, all the drawings and reports and everything are on the Huber Heights website. So you can go on there and take a look for yourself. Um, also, oh, just let you know, they waived the second reading of that because there's supposed to be two readings, um, prior to, you know, passing the ordinance or resolution. They waived the second reading and they all voted, uh, yes to pass the basic development plan for the Dublin seven. So next came the basic development plan of the indoor music venue. It is supposed to be able to hold, um, 3,500 patrons. Um, parking spaces are the same as the Rose, which is one space per every three patrons. There are, let's see, oh, it says that there is only going to be, um, 1,504 fixed seats, but you know, more get added and, and taken out. These are just like permanent seats that are going to be there. So it's not, it's not very big. Um, and that there is, looks like they're going to have around 1,250 parking spots, which huh, uh, there should be three main access points with one being at the Meyer light. Um, and then there's going to be another one that is going west up closer to, uh, 201. And that's going to be Lehman Drive, uh, or Lehman Drive. Sorry if I'm mispronouncing. And then there's another one that's east from, I believe, from the Meyer, um, entrance exit, like across the street from there. So, uh, it says, or they say that adequate, that there are adequate roads and it doesn't impose an undue burden on public services, police and fire. Says they're unaware of any police concerns, not detrimental to the welfare uh, by, of the public by excess traffic and says will be proactively managed by our police. Additionally, parking will be 40 feet from Parkview Apartments. Like literally the pavement for the parking lot stops. Like it's required to stop 40 feet away from somebody's apartment building. I don't know about you, but I have a feeling that some of the people that live right there are, uh, going to be having an undue burden placed upon them. I feel like our police are going to have an undue burden placed upon them. Um, there's been talk all over Facebook about, um, four or five officers, uh, on duty during the day and four officers at night. Um, I don't know 100% sure what the numbers are, but we already know that we're having a problem with recruiting police and here we go, just all we've been doing is adding more business, adding more residents, adding more cars to the road. So with all of this comes an additional need for more police officers. So if we are increasing our needs for them, but we're not hiring in enough that don't just like take over the role of somebody that's retired, somebody that's on leave. Um, you know, somebody that just, you know, wasn't happy and left. Um, how are we going to really stay above things? Um, especially with, I know that, uh, property crime has definitely been going up. And I mean, it could be going up in, you know, tons of different cities and areas, but I live here. This, this is where I call home and I don't want my police being overburdened and overstressed and not having a decent work-life balance. I want them to be more in, in the neighborhoods and helping patrol and have a presence. You know, I think that, I mean, I've talked to many of our police officers and, um, you know, tons of people within the fire department and everything. And I have not met a single one of them that, you know, is like a jerk or anything like that. Don't get me wrong, I know everybody's a critic, you know, so maybe somebody else had bad experience with them, but I don't break the laws. Um, so every experience that I've had, it's, you know, kind, courteous, uh, I'm thankful for them. So yeah. Anyways, um, I worry about the traffic that, um, this is going to cause because it is going to be close to 201. We're having all them apartments go up over there. We're having the Dublin seven, we've got the Warped Wing, TJ Champs, Meyer, True and indoor music venue, like on essentially a two lane road, you know, off of Brandt, where there are several lights. It's kind of like, you know, the whole Merrily Way type situation, just about it makes me feel like. Because there's a whole bunch of lights there that stop and stop and go all the traffic. And I just worry about what the impact is going to be on anyone trying to just get through that area. So I live north of all of this, so I worry about, you know, driving, having to drive through it all the time myself. And do we have enough room through there to where, what if emergency services, you know, are needed? Uh, I, there's just, there's so many things. And I know that with a lot of this, when I watched, uh, there was one person there to speak about this topic and, uh, it was the former mayor, Mayor Tom McMasters. And let's see what he said. I have to read it. Um, this is just me paraphrasing. Uh, he, uh, spoke against the approval. Um, he talked about the place and fire and residents want to be, uh, want to see more of a presence in the neighborhoods. So how, how many hours and how many police are going to be taken from duty to do this? Uh, any plans on how many would need to be hired? That he couldn't find a feasibility study for the indoor venue and a feasibility study prior to the construction needs to be seen and put on public record for the public to be able to view it. He additionally talked about, uh, how TIFs shouldn't be used to fund the Rose and the indoor music venue. And funding could, this type of funding could be used better for more public purpose. And you know, what he said through there, like I, I have to agree with. I haven't heard anybody that has been saying like, hey, you know what we need here? We need an indoor music venue. I, I try to stay engaged as much as I possibly can and I've never heard anybody say that. Um, our parks definitely like we, us in Huber, we love our parks. So I'm all about, um, you know, funding them and finding additional revenues to be able to fund them. Um, and they are saying that the Rose, the profits from the Rose are what is funding all of the work that we do in our parks. So with that though, as far as what I've heard, we haven't used anything really to pay down the debt of the Rose. To my knowledge, I can't hardly find anything online, like really about, like a detailed report of financing. Um, but it's been said that we had $20 million a debt for the Rose and it's 10 years later and we have $20 million of debt for the Rose. So yeah, he just feels that, um, you know, instead of, you know, having using like TIF money to do a Rose or an, the Rose or indoor music venue or anything like that. We should be using that TIF money on actual like infrastructure and, um, things that we need over things that we want. And I tend to have to agree with that aspect because we have a lot of things going on that, uh, just kind of seem like once or kind of seem like we're just growing just to grow. Um, and it's kind of like, it is what it is. You should just be happy, uh, shut your mouth. And if you don't just agree with everything, like you're a negative. Like people talk about how the aquatic center is, you know, costing us from what I've heard, half a million dollars a year. And then you have people that are griping about that. Like, hey, that wasn't how this was portrayed when it came out and everything. Like we're giving back to the residents and we're going to have, you know, you an aquatic center and all of this stuff. And it's, you know, not going to cost us or anything, but then here it ends up to where it does cost us. So yeah, so I mean, it's all a matter of opinion and to each person, it's your opinion. If you think the indoor, the aquatic center is worth it or not. Some people it is, some people it's not. So then we have the Rose to where we still have that $20 million of debt 10 years later. So is it worth it? Is it not? Your opinion. And then we can go to the indoor music venue to where here, I have no idea. Uh, I've heard numbers like 40, 45 million dollars. So is, is it worth it? Could that money be spent on something else that we actually need? Yeah, definitely. Um, and if it was so needed, um, or somebody thought that it was just such a great idea for our city, why is our city building it? If we're so desirable and businesses want to come here and hotels and everything are saying, you know what, you guys are missing around there. You guys are missing having a banquet center, an indoor music venue or, you know, whatever. Why is the city taking on this venture? We should have businesses lined up with the way that they talk, wanting to do this for us or have it part of our community. Um, Scott asked, um, about the NCA, the new community authority to fund and finance the indoor music venue. And Erin says it's a partial payment for funds and the NCA is a mechanism for user charges. So Dawn asked staff for a feasibility study finding, uh, they still need a third party review of Mimi's estimates for financing, money in and money out. Um, and Mark said that, uh, Mark, John and Erin, I don't know why they were just the three together, uh, talked about the feasibility study and Erin said that the basic development plan at least needed to be done at first. Erin would talk to, uh, the people who will be doing the study on Wednesday, which was November 13th. That was yesterday. Um, so with that, from everything that I've researched, a feasibility study should be done first. Um, because that's going to tell you like really like how many seats that you would probably need, how big this probably needs to be. You know, things like that. Then you like take that information and you work out a basic development plan because that's what the feasibility study is kind of showing you. So why we did it this way, I don't, I don't really know. And that's what, that's another thing that was, uh, questioned. Um, let's see. And like I said about Scott, um, the NCA to fund and finance, that's when it was said, like finally there that it's not just the NCA that's going to fund and finance, um, the indoor music venue. Like it's going to, um, you know, be also TIFs and then they said, you know, other, other things. So, um, Mark ended up saying, this was a quote by him, our taxpayers won't pay a dime extra for the indoor music venue. Um, the problem with that comment, I feel is something that people, you hear comments like this all the time. And to a regular person, you just automatically think like, oh, they have different mechanisms of paying for this to where this is great for us, we don't have to pay for it and here we get it. Where do you think the police get paid? Where do you think, do you think that you pay, you're going to be paying the utilities, um, for this? And not just that, but the NCA is going to be charging fees. And these fees are going to be what helps pay. And the only fees that they are talking about, that they have talked about publicly recently was like, you know, a drink surcharge or like, you know, a fee on the hotel. Or, you know, it's user fees, uh, is what Erin said it as. The thing is though, is that there's apartments that are part of this NCA. What, what are they? What are they using? So aren't they going to have to pay some type of fee though? Cause if not, why are they part of the NCA? And then you have to also remember this, the NCA was originally talked about for Carriage Trails 2. And the reason for that was because Bethel Local Schools is going to need help. And that was part of them trying to work with Bethel Local Schools that they would have an NCA in that area. And that they could be able to use some of the NCA funds to construct, um, a school there to where Bethel Local Schools could be able to lease it until they pay for it. They pay the NCA back and there we go. Has anybody heard anything now with the NCA and Carriage Trails 2? Because Carriage Trails 2 is part of the NCA. But there ain't nothing being talked about with Bethel Local Schools. That, and that was the whole purpose, but here all of a sudden, as soon as like we have approved the annexation and everything, here that's when guess what, we're going to get an indoor music venue and the Dublin seven is coming. You know, and then we hear that the mayor's known about the Dublin seven for almost eight years. So in the, here the Dublin seven was not going to be coming unless the indoor music venue came. So tell me I'm wrong in my assumption to where I can't piece one and one together to equal two. The this has been the plan all along to annex for Carriage Trails 2. I would help pay for our indoor music venue, which the NCA and the TIFs are supposed to be the main contributing factors to get us now the indoor music venue. And so I know I talked about that a little bit before, but it's just really frustrating when I mention these types of things and I have in the past. And then people get pissed off at me, um, because I'm talking negative or you, something like that. But it's like, hello, this is being done right in front of everybody. But you have to pay attention and if you don't, you are easily convinced elsewise. So anyways, end rant. I'm very passionate about this stuff if, if you couldn't tell. Um, I just want our city to Um, I just want our city to honestly be transparent and work with us and um, us work with them. And we actually get our needs met and our quality of life, uh, is great. Yeah. So I mean, Mark also talked about agreements pending with uh, Bethel Township. What are they? What, what are they? Because I don't know of any. I know that there's land still there that's supposed to be uh, donated for the school. But uh, how's that going? Why aren't we talking about that publicly? Um, let's see. That's the end for that one. I'm going to shut up about it. Um, the last public hearing, uh, during that meeting was the Gables. Uh, it's a major change, so it had to be, um, you know, ran through uh, council as a public hearing and everything. And it is for them to change from seventy-four units being there to ninety-one units. And basically what they're doing is they're changing from a two-story layout to a more narrower three-story layout. Because they're saying that that's became more of, of the market. So, um, it's just going to be smaller square footage. Uh, there is a, there was a prior uh, CRA agreement. CRA is Community Reinvestment Area. They uh, abate up to a hundred percent of property taxes. And for some reason, we um, allowed them to have that uh, for the first seventy-four units. So, and the agreement was to allow, um, the first, the first 10 years, cause it's for 15 years, the first 10 years, um, goes to like the property owner to where they don't have to pay the property taxes. And then the, this is my understanding. And then the last five years, um, they pay and all of that pretty much goes to the city. So there, uh, Sims Development is just wanting to continue that on with the ninety-one units. Um, Mark mentioned something about it. I think that uh, there's going to be more discussions and uh, hopefully they're public and we can find out about them. Cause if I'm paying property taxes. Um, we voted to waive the second reading on that and we approved that basic development plan. Um, you know, for them to at least get started on the, you know, three, three-story units instead of the two-story ones. I'm just not sure how all the behind the scenes is going to be working out. Um, the HR, uh, health insurance for city employees, they went with Cigna. It was a five percent increase. Um, went through its first reading, city hall construction. They're upgrading this, the city hall building that we see on Taylorsville. Um, and uh, it's, it's pretty cool. Um, that's like, it's being added to and a whole bunch of stuff changed. And like the employees and everything were like with it and got to do like a VR headset um, to be able to see like what their office would look like, what the building layout would look like. Um, and again, um, that, all of these that I'm going to say next are all, they all need to go to a second reading. Um, the second reading was not waived. Uh, except I'm pretty sure that the last item was, um, that park that uh, Rotary Club was uh, going to be adopting. And with that, they uh, they passed that, but then the actual name change, well, no, they, I think that one has to go to a second reading. But then to actually change the name, they waived that and made that, you know, just go to one reading, they passed it. It's actually going to be called Rotary Monarch Park. So which I think is, is really nice. Um, the TRIC program that I talked about last week is going to a second reading. The Powell S-Curve Alignment, um, is going to a second reading. Chambersburg West, there were sixteen owners, thirty different uh, parcels. And we're just having to pay additional costs for that, all of that right away acquisition and all the services provided. Um, part of, for part of that. Um, and then the water main replacement of Walmack and Bethel, Bethel Court. If I could talk, that was, um, passed to a second reading. So, um, in uh, look, thirty-five minutes, that was a pretty quick rundown. I know that I talked a lot about the indoor music venue. Um, but that's one of the things that's most important, um, with all of that. Because this is huge. Like just all that is involved is huge. Huge. Maybe I need a drink. So without anybody really talking, making a stink, asking questions or everybody's just, good job. Um, this, this kind of stuff just keeps happening. Um, I know that, uh, when Tom McMasters was speaking at the council meeting, I know that, um, he was asked to stay on topic uh, like two or three times. And uh, I think since council, members of council were talking about other aspects that were included into this, and then Tom started talking about them. Um, it kind of seemed like it was okay for council to do that, but not for Tom. But I mean, he, when you go to a public hearing, you're speaking about a specific, um, agenda item. But to me, like the TIFs and everything that he was like wanting to go on and talk about and use the Rose as reference. Um, I can, I can understand how them go a little hand in hand with all of that. But then again, it's just the basic development plan. It's, it's not tying their hands. So, and which is the very reason why I didn't bother wasting my time to go. Um, so like I said, I went to another meeting, um, that was yesterday. And I'm going to talk about this in another video. But, um, I feel, I felt like my First Amendment rights were violated. Um, and I wasn't very happy about it. I conducted myself in like, uh, I mean, I was just, I was fine. Um, I was just sharing my opinions and what I felt. And you know, using my time to go up there and speak about a case for a zoning variance. That was, that was it. And I've never seen the law director at a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. Yet he was there. They knew that I was going to be there because I was there at the meeting that they had last month, speaking about the very topic, that very topic they were speaking about. Um, and he interrupted me twice to disagree with me or to tell me how it was wrong and to move along. I was the only one there that didn't have an application that just came to speak from the public. The meeting was like thirty minutes long. But and I'm talking about relevant information to that variance. And you're, I'm being told to, that I'm wrong and to move it along. They approved the variance, which by all means, I'm not, I'm not upset with all of that. Like all I can do is go use my time to speak my piece. And if they still approve it, then they, then they still approve it, like, okay. But the way that I was made to feel for just going up there and sharing why I did not feel like the variance should be approved to be treated, how it was, was completely, completely uncalled for. So I'll get into all of that and I'll add a clip to my next video that will uh, show you guys what I'm talking about, what I was saying and how I was interrupted and told to move along. This should not be happening, that, that should have not happened to me. Especially from the law director that doesn't preside over that meeting. So, little heated. But anyways, so that's it. That's all I'm going to talk about for this time. I have taken forty-two minutes of your time. Some of that was definitely, uh, me ranting because I am not very happy right now. But you know what? I'm not going to stop because that's what certain individuals want me to do. And I'm just not going to do it. Because you guys need to know what's going on. You guys need to understand that you can be a part of all of this. Right now, I'm just being pushed on because it's, it's just me. You know, if there's more of you that are engaged and, um, you know, care and want, want to be a part of, you know, the change in Huber, this, this won't happen anymore. So if I've got to be that person, so be it. Just like how everybody says that uh, Gore is treated like crap and like, there are people that blame him for some things that are just not his fault at all and they're far-fetched. Um, but uh, when you take on that role, you know that you are just going to be hit with public scrutiny, uh, right and left. I'm not saying to give him hell each day over every single thing. But you know, if you do have questions and they don't go along with what he likes, that's okay. That's okay. So, yeah. Anyways, I wish you guys well. I will be back again next week, going over the work session that they're going to have on Tuesday. So make sure to like, comment and subscribe. And I'm going to try to shorten these up as I go on. So my apologies. Anyways, take care, Huber Heights, and I will see you next time.